For the public hearing, they could just step up and speak.
What's your finger?
Looking for some mad vendors. I don't know if they're gonna show. I got a vendor that's all wound up because we didn't go with him, so now he's sour grapes. Copier vendor. He's been beating up on Stephen forever. Now he's beating up on me the last two days.
Are you?
Like dude, what do you want me to do? You didn't get the job, I'm sorry.
About why?
Yeah.
Let's see.
I hope this works. Let's see. Here we go. But yeah, they were threat- they threatened Stephen to come to the meeting today. I'm like, well, tell him it's at seven o'clock and give him the address.
What happened to the superintendent? He retired?
Same people that Mason uses? And I talked to Tony, and Tony's like, their equipment's terrible. It's Xerox. They ain't here. I don't think they're here. See him? Grass looks good though, doesn't it?
It does. Yard looks good. Yep.
And a ponytail. And a ponytail.
I'm digging the ponytail.
I got my Silas going here.
I'm digging it, man. I miss my long hair.
You miss your ponytail?
I grew my hair- well, I didn't get as long as Martin did, but a couple of years ago I had it long and then college, I grew it real long. But I'm a good guy. I'm a good bi- I'm a good biker. There's bad bikers and good bikers. I'm a good biker, yeah. I'm not a fella, I'm not.
Good evening, everybody. So before we open the public hearing tonight, we are working through a new video and sound system that we had installed to try to make it better for those who watch at home and those who are here in person, so well, if we have any sound snags, Mr. Collins is here to help us work through those, so be patient with us as we work through trying to make this a little bit better experience for everybody. First part of the meeting tonight is an open, uh, public hearing. It's a public meeting on the issue of the reemployment of Dawn Gasper. She's a counselor in the school district who is going, uh, who's wanting to retire with S T R S and then return, um, and the district would reemploy her. So I'm gonna open the public hearing. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, uh, in favor or, um, in opposition, all you have to do is stand up to the podium, um, give Mr. Gonda your name and, um, have your three minutes to, to speak. So I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time if anybody would like to step up and speak. All right, since there's no public comments on, uh, the rehiring of, uh, Ms. Gasper, then I will close the hearing of the public and we'll get started with our regular board meeting. Uh, Mr. Gonda, we opened it at seven o'clock and closed it at seven oh one with no comments. So, uh, can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Gonda?
Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Nemish?
Here.
Mrs. Horvath?
Here.
Mrs. Elmer? Thank you.
Could you rise and join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight, please.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Horvath? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
I need a, uh, motion to accept the reading of the minutes from the March regular meeting.
I'll move.
Mr. Hamlin?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Elmer? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer? Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Uh, next thing on the agenda tonight, under item C, communications and door visitors to the board, uh, Mr. Power.
Just enrollment update. Uh, all of you have a good place. The current enrollment ended yesterday. Fifty-three hundred and forty-four students. We've, uh, completed our pre- enrollment for next year and right now, uh, central registration is working on kindergarten enrollment. And, uh, coming in some pretty big numbers. Uh, first grade continues to grow. Uh, if we look at our current kindergarten, uh, we're still enrolling for this year as well. And, uh, when we look at that kindergarten class cohort group moving to first grade, we're probably just, uh, several students shy of having to have another first grade teacher for next year than we look at our number. So, uh, that's kind of the update on enrollment at this point. Things will really be picking up with enrolling students in grades one to grade after we, uh, have a few more weeks here with kindergarten enrollment. Uh, we are noting an increasing diversity in, in the families that are enrolled in here and that can't enroll, uh, some Russian and, uh, that can, students today who have, uh, attending here now and also to some of your current students as well. And that's really all I have in updating information tonight.
Next thing on the agenda tonight is our Panther Pride Award recipient. So I think I'm gonna do the first one and Mrs. Grace is gonna do the second one, I believe.
George straw tonight, so I get to be Mr. Scott Cook. Most of you don't know, my daughter's actually in Mr. Cook's science class and working diligently on a, uh, a project for, uh, in his class, so she'll be excited to find out that I was able to present this to Mr. Cook tonight. Middle school science teacher, uh, Mr. Scott Cook, a word of this story came to the board's attention. It was unquestionably an easy decision and Mr. Cook deserved this recognition tonight. Mostly for quick action he took when he noticed a student that needed help in his class. In January of two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Cook noticed a significant change in an eighth grade student in his science class. After asking some questions, he quickly called the student's parent, walked her down to the nurse for immediate assistance. Because of Mr. Cook's quick thinking and intervention, the student was seen by her doctor that same day and was diagnosed with type one diabetes. Mr. Cook would commend you for your heroic actions to help a student you suspected to be in medical distress and thank you for your incredible dedication to going above and beyond for our students. We're grateful to have you in the classroom and you represent exactly what a Panther should be. Today, the Little Miami Board of Education thanks you for all you do and is honored to recognize you as our Panther Pride Award recipient. Come on up. More divorce.
On February twenty-fifth, Chris was diagnosed with an active heart problem and over the course of the time, I started to cry and I had a heart attack for a little while. He called my mom, he needed a new friend, or he had a kind of a bad feeling about me. Turns out, Chris was a student who was currently in the United States of America. At the same time, he has to be sent to some hospital for a diagnosis and medication. These are the probable conditions, which are still in effect. Under a modest A, a PDA, which means for diabetic hypoglycosis, is a life-threatening condition, with a blood pressure of six hundred. As of the next day, it's possible right now, I manage on that medication, and now that I'm back that day, we need to realize that it's not only very sad to see it, but that it also gives us the worst feeling we can be, by having this possible risk for life. But very sad and awful, and thank you for your dedication. This is really exciting for me to do this because I know a person in this family very, very well. He was my son's best friend. The board is honored to recognize one of the men's student athlete for his impressive wrestling season and recent sixth place finish at the L H S A A Wrestling State Championship. Junior Reddington Zimmerman, played in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two season with a four to three to three record and earned the title position one Southwest history champion. Reddington. Reddington. You are a great example of him and the pride, not only for your accomplishments on wrestling, but more importantly, your character in the classroom. It's, it's great leadership and among your teammates, your positive impact on those around you and your efforts to excel and your craft gives us confidence that you're bound to do incredible things in your future. On behalf of Little Miami Board of Education, we hope you accept this certificate of achievement and our sincerest congratulations on your successful wrestling career.
I know I say it every month, but this, uh, this portion and then at the end where we do our student achievement report really is my favorite part of the, of the agenda each month, to be able to recognize students and staff who, uh, who do extraordinary things every single day. At this time, the next thing on the agenda is community comments on agenda items. I don't see Mrs. Coats, so I'm gonna defer.
No one's saying that.
All right, thank you. Next thing on the agenda tonight, under, uh, item E, is treasures reports and financial reports. Mr. Gonda?
Yes, I asked for the board's approval of the, uh, monthly financial reports, um, for March, uh, excuse me, month ending March two thousand twenty-two. Um, bank reconciliations, financial summaries of each individual fund, a general fund revenue and two different budgetary reports for the general fund.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
Do you want to say anything more about that?
Once we get a second, I'm gonna ask Mr. Gonda if he wants to give us some detail, so.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hamlin? Mr. Gonda?
Yes, and we have the individual fund summary for each fund located within our reports. We have, of course, our bank reconciliation. Um, we received, uh, majority of our taxes for this, uh, first half, uh, collection period. Uh, we'll have some coming into April yet, actually, you'll see on the next month's reports. And then we have our, uh, two different budgetary reports, um, that are through the end of March for the general fund as we wind, get closer to winding up this, uh, particular fiscal year.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer? Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Next, under item two, I asked for the board's approval of the contracts as listed.
Motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Elmer. Uh, I know there's two of them tonight. Mr. Gonda, could you, uh, share a little bit about each one, please?
Yes, actually, the first one is with the, uh, actually, a co-agreement with the Warren County Board of Commissioners, um, which is helping us out greatly. This is for, uh, equipment, uh, co-location. We're actually gonna be putting some of our equipment on one of their towers that they already have. Um, this equipment's for our, um, two-way radio system for our transportation department. Um, it's in the right location and we'll get the good reception that we need, so it's, um, very grateful for them to let us be able to put our equipment on the tower that they already have. And then the second, uh, contract listed is actually modern office methods. That is, um, our copier and printer agreement. Um, we've been with modern office methods before. We actually, we're looking into our contract and I gotta, I gotta thank our tech director, Stephen Collins. I don't know if he's in here. Might be in the other room. Uh, without Stephen, we wouldn't have got this rolling. He started looking at some other vendors and different things. We're looking at competition. We started looking at our own agreement and actually renewing this contract. Modern Office Methods came through very well for us and we're looking at about a, about an eighty-nine thousand dollar savings a year, um, at this point, changing. We changed some of the mu- we looked at the history of the method or the amounts of, uh, copiers, black and white and printing that we're doing is in color. And, uh, actually, we wanted to try to reduce that some more, actually, the number of copies we do, but, um, re- relocating those amounts, um, looking at our equipment, we'll be getting new equipment as soon as it comes in. I'm guessing around September, uh, in the August, beginning of September timeframe, um, it'll be canned and equipment. But overall, like I said, we're gonna save about almost eighty-nine thousand a year and about four hundred and forty-three thousand during the five-year period. So we're, we're real happy about that. And I gotta thank Stephen for getting that ball rolling on it. That's fantastic.
Um, before we vote, I just wanna, uh, say a couple of things. First of all, I wanna thank the Warren County Commissioners publicly for, uh, working with us. For those of you in the audience, um, the relay tower we use for, uh, our transportation department for buses to communicate back and forth is located at the top of the old radio tower, which used to be the radio station at the high school, old high school site up at what is now Salem Site. Um, and we've been wanting to take that tower down and remove it safely, especially since we have a new building close to that building now. And, uh, but we couldn't remove that tower until we found somewhere else to put the transportation communication relay somewhere. And, uh, the, the county commissioners were nice enough to work with us and help us find a location that's high enough and centrally located enough for us to be able to move, move that, uh, communication piece there and then thus be able for some, maybe sometime this summer to contract to remove the tower. Right, Mr. Blake? I got it right?
Yes, sir. You got it all right.
Okay, perfect. So, um, and again, I also wanna thank publicly Stephen for us to be able to save north of four hundred thousand dollars over a five-year period of time, just on copy services is, uh, certainly to be commended and, uh, again, um, goes into what we do every single day. So I appreciate both of those two people. Anybody else have any questions or discussion?
Uh, two quick comments. Just to clarify, the tower is no cost to us?
Correct.
Use of the tower?
No cost, correct.
Okay, so that contract is really just an agreement that allows us to use it? Free to us?
That's correct.
So, yeah, big thank you to-
It only costs our own equipment that we're putting on it, of course, but no cost for rental or anything, or lease.
Right, okay. So, uh, again, a big thank you to Warren County Commissioners for allowing us to do that. Um, the second cost is just, um, Stephen's not getting a raise, is he?
Yeah. Yeah, he wants to spend more tech stuff, but that's, uh, not a savings.
Fair enough.
Anyone else? We're gonna go ahead and just vote on both of them together since that's the way the motion was. So, um, roll call, please.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer? Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gonda. Um, next item on the agenda is item F, superintendents' reports and recommendations. Mr. Power?
I guess I'd ask the board's approval for all items listed under number one personnel.
Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Elmer?
I'll second.
Mrs. Horvath? Any questions or discussion or anything you wanna add, Mr. Power?
These are, uh, most of the new, new personnel here are hiring for next school year. You'll also notice on the list, uh, every month we have increasing number of people who wish to volunteer in our schools. It's a really long list and that's a great sign, uh, to be able to get people back to work.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer? Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
And there's a second personnel item there. The board, uh, could consider to ask the board to approve a second personnel item. It's listed under, uh, number two personnel.
Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Horvath? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Elmer? Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Abstain.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Next, item number three is sick leave bank. I'm gonna do with our teachers' association. I'd recommend the board approve that.
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace? Second by Mr. Hamlin? Yeah, you wanna give a little bit of detail for-
Sure, sure. Uh, within, uh, within the structure of our, uh, contract agreement with L M T A, there's a sick leave bank where staff can, uh, join that sick leave bank and contribute a day of their sick leave to that bank. And then if there is a circumstance where they exhaust their sick leave and that they're in, uh, a serious health circumstance, uh, there's a committee they can, they can apply to, to get advancement of sick leave. Uh, it's a benefit, no cost to the district, uh, but a benefit to anybody that might end up in a serious health circumstance. Uh, in the past, uh, people initiated joining the sick leave bank and we've had a couple of circumstances where in the last few years where staff thought they belonged to the sick leave bank and then they got a need and it turned out that they had not joined the sick leave banks. The language change here is that automatically everybody is enrolled in the sick leave bank and if you wish not to belong to it, then you initiate an off campus.
And what we're voting on tonight is a, a memorandum of understanding between the district and the teachers' association, right? So they're
That's correct.
They're on board.
They've already approved that. And we're asking the board to approve that as well.
Perfect. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Next, I'd ask the board to approve the updated policies. Is this-
Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mr. Hamlin?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Grace? Anything you wanna add, Mr. Power?
We got first reading on these. Uh, they're with, uh, when the legislature becomes active, there are many changes to board policy. Legislature is a bit-
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer? Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'd ask the board to approve the overnight summer athletic field trips as listed.
Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Horvath?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hamlin? Anything you wanna add here, Mr. Power?
Yeah, this is not typically something that we've done in the past, but on the advice of legal counsel, um, we're-
I actually think it's a good process. I think it helps us to know as much as we can when there's groups of people off campus at other locations in the s- in the summer or otherwise.
I agree.
So, I appreciate doing it that way. Um, anybody have any questions about the two field trips or any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, next thing is, uh, under item G, new business, is the Warren County Career Center report.
Right, I love giving this. Board members recognize and thank our retired custodian, Don McFarland, for his forty-two years of service to the district. Really, it was forty-three, but, uh, they put it down wrong, so it was forty-two on the record. Uh, satellite supervisors, Ken Mahone, McCone and Robin Frederick presented to the board about the success of the satellite programs and Warren County Career Center Partner Districts. Enrollment is up at eight hundred students this year in the programs, all six partner districts and, and at Fenwick. Several of the teachers and programs have been recognized with awards, including Project Lead the Way instructor Nick Otto at Wingsville, a two, twenty-twenty-two Project Excellence winner. And that's unusual for one of the, the, uh, districts to recognize one of our teachers at the Career Center as a Project Excellence winner. So that was really nice. Um, the board approved hiring of Joel King as superintendent of the Career Center effective August first, twenty-twenty-two. He was present along with his, present along with his family to thank the board for their support. The board approved a resolution for, resolution, I can't talk tonight, uh, for an adult education maintenance repair building program, course of study. The board accepted donations of nineteen pairs of bunker pants and ten bunker coats from the Franklin Township Fire Department for our fire sci- fire science program. Our O S B A legislative liaison, Lisa Bab, reported on various legislation in Ohio at the federal level that affects career tech, um, education, including a bill that requires career advising to include career fields with associate degrees and certi- certificates and statewide apprenticeship programs. This is something that's becoming very prevalent in career tech and also in, uh, regular school districts, the apprentice programs. That gives a student a, a step up when he goes out to find a job. I, uh, reported on student accomplishments in our career technical student organizations. Uh, and, um, we have an I T grad, Malcolm Dolce, who is working as an I T technician for the U S Army Corps of Engineers. Also, two groups of students presented at University of Cincinnati I T Expo with their cybersecurity projects. And they don't ask just anybody to come there to, to present, so that was a plus. Superintendent Rick Smith reported that almost all high school programs for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two and to twenty-twenty-three school year are at capacity and a junior welcome night at both campuses will be held on April the twenty-eighth. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Grace. Uh, next thing, under item two, board reports, student achievement. Um, Mrs. Horvath?
So these are the April twenty-twenty-two student achievements. Little Miami is excited to share the news of two Little Miami High School students earning high distinctions within the Girl Scouts with Madeline Highfield earning her Gold and Silver Award and Madeline Summers earning the Gold Award. Uh, Madeline Highfield earned the Civil, Silver Award for her creation of a STEM exploration website targeted toward middle school girls. And Maddie Summers earned her Gold Award with her work to bring attention to the declining population of monarch butterflies. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations also to the Little Miami High School Select Choirs and Symphonic Band who had successful performance at the District Thirteen Band and Choir Competitions. Both Little Miami High School Select Choirs and the Symphonic Band qualified for the state competition with their impressive efforts and great display of hard work. Congratulations to our entire Little Miami, Little Miami Music Program. And then Mrs. Bryce touched on this. The I T Expo Committee at the University of Cincinnati has given eleventh grader Gabriel Kelly the oppo- the opportunity to showcase his cybersecurity project that he's been completing outside of school at U C's annual I T Expo. So he presented remotely on Tuesday, April twelfth. Two Little Miami middle school sixth graders, Kane Estep and Brayden Kendrick, have won the first place prize in the year-long stock exchange game that had them competing against elementary students from across the strait, the state. Brayden and Kane learned about real-world investing while playing this game in which they were given a chance to actively participate in the fundamental aspects of the stock market. And they were actually invited to the university to give a ten-minute presentation about what they learned. So congratulations to them and Mrs. Stanton, their teacher, for a great opportunity.
I think I should have had that in my high school class or junior high, whatever it was, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Horvath. Um, next thing is, uh, our next board meeting date, um, and, Mr. Power, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's gonna be on Thursday, May the twenty-sixth. Due to a scheduling conflict, we're not gonna meet on Tuesday night. Um, we're gonna meet here on Thursday night, May the twenty-sixth at seven P M for a regularly scheduled monthly meeting. And then, for those of you that are interested, graduation is then on the twenty-ninth, right? On the twenty-ninth of May, at the Nutter Center and-
Six o'clock at the Nutter Center.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan, any community comments on non-agenda items? All right, step up, Mr. Sheldon, to the podium there if you would, please.
So, something's been laying on my heart for a long time. We live in a great country. July the fourth, you don't find a whole lot of people that differ back and forth. Those people are non-political. And when I lived at school, something that I would like to just throw at you would be a patriotism week. Non-political, nothing like that, just a love of country. People come together over that kind of thing. And we celebrate each other. But just, just a week where the kids will wear whatever, you know, USA, wear their flags, whatever, you know, and fly proud and be proud of the country that they live in. And no way, you know, and I can say the same thing, I'm not a fan of, uh, when it, when it comes to absolute patriotism, applying modified flags of any kind. Just American flags, just the love of country, just the love of your fellow Americans. And, uh, you know, we look back at nine eleven, the entire country- And, you know, we look back at nine eleven, the entire country came together. They've gone out of everything, you know, we're not allowed to pull that in, so they've gone out of that. Everybody came together. For me, again, they got out of stuff, but appreciate where we live. A good foundation for this country starts with loving where you live, loving where you come from, loving your district, loving everything about this country. You don't have the loving government for one, one second, you will, the next second, you go hay. Leave government with the other. Love this country, celebrate the life of this country, celebrate the people that have kept this country free. So I would hope that the board would look at this thought, give us some, you know, I don't, I don't know where you would place it, what we do would equal place it. I haven't thought that far ahead, you know, my God tells me that we, you know, should remember nine eleven. You know, absolutely, and, and not forget it. Too often, we want to dismiss paint, but if, if we tap the paint with a celebration of life, with celebration of country, with celebration of, of endurance, you'll find that, I really feel like you'll find that the community within the school, the kids, they'll find things that are, that much more, attaches them a little bit more, you know. Too often, we look at differences and the next thing, you know, you've got these groups all over the place. When it comes to this country, we are one team. When it comes to standing for this country, I would hope that every student in our school district, every teacher in our school district would step forward and celebrate our country with what we have done throughout history. So I'm proud of my country. Anytime you're by my place, I got American flag flying over the road, I got them all in guns. I wasn't able to serve, I was killed at Barack in ninety-five, most of you know that. But that's one of the greatest things in my life is not to be able to serve my country. In no way am I saying that everybody should, but to have, and we need to celebrate, celebrate this country. Absolutely, it's all together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, appreciate it. That's it, all right. With that being said, need a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll move.
Mrs. Grace? Mrs. Elmer? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.